Thank you. Good morning. Call the meeting to order?
Any items from the public? Yeah, okay, the public is here. Good to see you this morning.
It's a pleasure to be here. You know, this morning Commissioner Catlin said he liked my brooch today better than yesterday. I liked your initial face when you came in the door better.
(laughing)
And I'm trying to decide what Commissioner Boyd is for his Halloween costume.
Later.
Yeah.
Later, D.
On serious business, I was able to spend about well over an hour with, oh gosh, Commissioner Gokunour, is that right?
Gokunour.
Gokunour.
Eddie, but Eddie still works.
Okay, Eddie, I know, but I'm trying to be in my professional mode here. And Commissioner Catlin, Commissioner Boyd, we had a nice tour of the Roundhouse. And of course, you know, everybody in West Virginia, we love the Roundhouse. It's one of our most historic and treasured artifacts in the state of West Virginia. And we were looking at the possibility of what you all want to do with the Roundhouse. And that's a wonderful portal into our state. It's great for cultural and heritage tourism. And as we continue to grow in the Eastern Panhandle, it's a wonderful way to attract people to come here. So I just want to open up a little quick discussion with any of you. If you have any questions about, you know, my thoughts or feelings about what you should do with it. I mean, I just do the arts, what do I know? But I'll be more than happy to give you my thoughts.
Well, we'd love to hear them. I mean, there's so many things that we'd like to do with them, but you know, the money's always tight and the time is always short, but...
Well, it's not always about money, Commissioner. When I came here...
Sure it is, but...
Well, then that's very short sighted. When I came here nineteen years ago, there were five people before me who could not build the West Virginia State Museum. It was closed for eight years. And what it was about was building relationships. And thirty-four months later, we built and still have what Travel Channel calls the best state history museum in the country. And all these things could be done. Never underestimate the power of a West Virginian. And I was there looking at all those wonderful facilities. There's so much you can do with it. I think what needs to happen, and I'm not telling you what to do, but you know, if it were up to me, I would just make a commitment. And then, once there's the commitment, then follows passion, then follows passion is progress, and the project gets done. Do any of you all want to add to what we talked about?
Number one, thank you yesterday for your time.
Well, it's important.
And your vision and your enthusiasm is honestly contagious. I left there yesterday with a whole new idea of what that could look like. I've heard pieces of this and that all along the way, but for somebody that I don't talk to often or get to see often to come in there and say, look, what you all have already done here is magnificent. There's a little bit of work that needs to be done to make these buildings viable, you know, with an amphitheater that could be added. The beauty of the Roundhouse and the construction is just, the site is gorgeous. We've got to find a way to pull everybody together and have that same vision, that same desire. And with that, like you say, follows are the dollars, and it takes dollars to be able to make this happen. But, you know, almost everybody up here has history with that site.
Well, we discovered that yesterday when you were talking about family history.
Exactly.
Your families who worked in that building.
Yeah, so, you know, it does need the attention. It's a diamond in the rough. It truly is. And these guys, they've worked hard. These different boards, you know, with the Roundhouse Authority and they've worked really, really hard to try to preserve this property. And it's been trying to get traction. But, and what a great opportunity there. Thank you for your vision.
Well, as we said yesterday, it's ideal. I mean, Commissioner Catlin was talking about all the Civil War history that is so instrumental up here to that effort many, many years ago. I mean, there's the story there. The stories that could be told on that property are endless.
Well, the labor movement.
First organized strike.
The strike.
Yeah.
And you know, from the time I took this job, Craig P. Blair was talking about that Norwalk car, and there's no place big enough to do. I mean, you have all the space in the world. And I know the worst thing to have is potential, because most of it goes unrealized. After, when I started that project, Governor Manchin was my first governor, and he said, get her done. And so they only had conceptual drawings. They did not have an architectural drawing or anything. And so, you know, my history, I was a singer. I spent twenty years of my life upon the stage. And, you know, ten thirty came every night. So no matter what happened, ten thirty came every night. You just got to find your ten thirty and work towards it. Because failure was not an option. I had to build that museum. That's how stupid I was. I thought, you know, you have to get it done. And I'm glad that we did, or we'd have never been there. And it tells the best story of the best state in the entire universe, and that's West Virginia.
And the mile marker one hundred is what put it there. Because that was a hundred miles from Baltimore that the steam trains needed to rewater. And so that's why the Roundhouses were built here.
I do want to go back to this, but there's something before I forget, because I'm old and I have short timers. Next year is the 250th anniversary of the Beeline March, which, you know, is in, you know, the Berkeley Rifleman. We need to make sure, because I chair the American 250th Commission, we ought to make sure that we celebrate that. Those seventy men that marched those six hundred miles and, you know, to help out in Boston. And I'm sure you all know that history. And as, you know, they also said, the Secretary of the Army in 1989, that the Army was founded in Morton's Grove, what was then Berkeley County of Virginia. So there's so much great history to celebrate. But the history, the stories that you can tell, and what a wonderful place. I mean, you know, I talked with Delegate Hardy yesterday. Delegate Hyde came to join us. You know, he talked about parking. You have ample room for parking. What I like about it is right there where all the history is. You've got the Washington Trails, you know, that you can celebrate. You have Bell Boyd's House. You have the Apollo Theater. Yeah, I was last night, I had dinner at Brick's. I mean, there's only a block and a half up the street, that wonderful Main Street. Who doesn't love Main Street Martinsburg? I mean, this is what people want that are maybe in much more congested areas, just an hour and a half away from you. That's why they come, and they're attracted to this place. So, I mean, as long as I'm here, I will help you in any way I can. But I think that you all need amongst yourselves, because I'm never going to come to anybody's town and tell them what to do. But you need to, I think, just come to a consensus of what you all want to do, and then we'll work with you. We already just took care of some things yesterday on the phone that needed to be fixed with historic preservation. So if you have any, H.G., you want to add anything?
No, I think it could be a good site for the museum, and we can start to look into it.
I ask you this. I take care of Independence Hall in Westover and Wheeling, built in 1858. It was where West Virginia became a state. When I came here, it was a mess. You know, we were coming up to our 150th anniversary of state. We made the commitment to fix that building, because that building is our most treasured artifact in the state. West Virginia is the only state that was founded by presidential proclamation. The vote for statehood from West Virginians happened in that building. The history, the history in this facility at the Roundhouse, I mean, that is a treasured artifact. People are going to flock to that. Why wouldn't you put your museum in something that's already a treasured artifact? That people will be attracted to it. It's a perfect site for a portal, not only into Martinsburg, into Jefferson County, but into our entire state of West Virginia. And I've said for nineteen years to anybody up here that I've ever worked with, yes, you can go an hour and a half into another city and, you know, enjoy their culture. My concern, my care, what I believe in, is the culture that happened right here in these three Eastern Panhandle counties.
Awful lot of history here.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
You were much more vociferous yesterday.
I was.[1513.25][1513.25](laughing) The gorilla thing got me calmed down a little bit.
Okay.
But it's the right place for the museum, I believe that. And I think we left there as a consensus with the group that that's the right place for it to be.
Okay. Anything else? What else you want to talk about? Because, you know, we tell everybody, at this moment, it's perfect, plus at this very moment, I actually know everything.
I'm speechless. No, but thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate everything that you all do.
Yeah, well, we've got a good group up here that we all have our own particular items that we can do, and we all try to give back as much as we can. And that was...
I remember the first time I came up here, and they started in on the Charleston thing. I mean, I may get up here six, seven, eight times a year, and I love coming to Eastern Panhandle. And when I was meeting with the person that was just carrying on about Charleston, I said, look, I'm sitting across from your desk, Charleston is here. And I said, I understand your feelings about Charleston. I was from, I'm from Campbell County. Putnam County might as well be the size of the Atlantic Ocean, as far as I'm concerned. So, but if you all ever need anything, and you think that we can help, please, they all have my cellphone.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're so welcome. Thank you for coming in and spending time with us. Any other items from the public? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Purchaser of the log. Any questions for Tracy while she's here? Internal budget revisions? We do not have any. Change in status? We have new hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Community Corrections Director for Danielle Potts as a DRC therapist effective November the twentieth, 2024, with an annual salary of sixty-five thousand. Changing status received from, oh, mine has a T, I'm sorry, Mount Zaya, how about that? Mr. Zaya for Crystal Tobin, and to change from RRC Recovery Tech to DRC Drug Screening Tech, effective October the first, 2024, and a salary change from forty-three, one thirty-five to thirty-nine, eight twelve. Changing status received from Mr. Zaya for Susanna Henderson to change from DRC Drug Screener or Screening Tech to RRC Recovery Tech. That's effective October the first, 2024, with a salary change from thirty-nine thousand, eight twelve to forty-three thousand, one thirty-five. Changing status received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for Chris Bragg, Fleet Specialist for increase in salary for assuming additional duties and responsibilities in the full load of garage while supervisor was out effect of August the first, 2024, with an annual salary change from forty-six thousand, seven forty-nine to fifty-one thousand, seven forty-nine. Changing status received from Marty Roberts, Fire Chief for Bradley Crowell, firefighter four, to move from a forty-two hour work week to a fifty-six hour work week, effective November the sixteenth, 2024, with an annual salary changed from seventy thousand, fifty dollars to seventy-six thousand, nine fifty-four. Had a change in status received from Marty Roberts, Fire Chief for Cole Kernan, firefighter, to move from part-time status to full-time status, effective November the sixteenth, 2024, with a salary change of seventeen thousand, I'm sorry, seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents per hour to fifty-four thousand, two twenty-seven annually. Have a change in status received from the Honorable Tony Petrucci, County Clerk, for Sherry Horvath as a Deputy Clerk for a six-week transitory part-time employee, effective November the first, 2024, at the rate of fifty-three dollars and fifty cents per hour. Changing status received from the Honorable Tony Petrucci, County Clerk, employees taking on additional duties, and this is effective November the first, 2024, as follows. Lori Welsh Graham from fifty-four thousand to sixty-four thousand. Lori Mason from forty-eight thousand, eight eighty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents to fifty-eight thousand, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Deborah Castleman from forty-five thousand, seven seventy-eight thirty to fifty thousand, three fifty-six thirteen. We have a letter of resignation received from... We have a letter resignation received from Emergency Communications Chelsea La Camp, uh, and that is effective November the 8th, 2024. And a letter resignation received from Law Enforcement, uh, let's see, from Brooke Hart effective October the 31st, 2024. Any other changes in status that we have that I don't have? Is that it? Okay. Approval of the minutes, everyone was present, so we can leave them alone. Uh, request to apply for 25, 26 Record Management and Preservation Board, um, grant resolution, that's all in here. Stop payments canceled. Uh, bond reduction, SADA Residential Development, grading VCP file 2409-277, and that's tied to Lama Case, LA, I'm sorry, LAMA Case 2107-248 and 2309-0117. Letter of credit on file number is 8144438, and Engineering has recommended that, um, that bond reduction. Anything else or any questions for Doug on that? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. We have, uh, Honorable Larry Hess in here for a correction of assessment logs, six personal tax exonerations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, they're all personal property, uh, exonerations we had to bring to you this week, um, for the reasons that's listed there. Um, they, if you total them all up, they come up to $936.16 for those six. It's all I have this week.
Is that it? All righty. Can I have a motion for the, uh, personal property tax exonerations for office error?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Is that good?
Thank you.
All righty. Board of Meeting Reports. Mr. Boyd?
Well, I didn't have any board meetings this week. Did have the meeting yesterday about the museum with some of the museum board members and, uh, Randall, of course, and I think you got a pretty good breakdown on that. Part of the discussion would be to, to start the museum and the, uh, origin machine shop where we've already established HVAC, elevator steps, bathrooms. Um, so a good chunk of the work is on the way done there already, and we have the, uh, big grant funds coming from, uh, Shelley Moore Capital and Joe Manchin. Uh, I do understand that that application is very difficult. So, not application, but, uh, process of. So we're going to maybe reach out to Region Nine or someone and see if they can help us with that because we don't really have anybody so sophisticated on our board to handle such paperwork.
Is that a earmark?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And that would be to do the, uh, concrete floors in there, the, uh, the fire doors in the downstairs.
What about security?
Uh, security wouldn't be much of an issue once you got the building, finished putting the new doors in, you know, because we, we'd seal off those big doors that we don't use and then cut into the other doors to make it the same as the ones upstairs. That would be push bar fire doors. So we would basically add three push door fire doors and maybe leave one big door that could be opened if need be, but seal up around it. Um, and then security says the cameras and that sort of thing. That, that's not outrageous, you know? And then we also discussed to, to keep the upstairs as an event hall, but with some displays of, of, of different items within the event hall, you know? So you can make money off the event hall upstairs and still be part of the museum. And then as we got other things and, and larger items that were more of the railroad side, we could put some of those in the Roundhouse and in the, um, in the back in the, uh, blacksmith shop. Until down the road, we could eventually maybe put heating and air in the other buildings. But to get started, you're sitting there with, uh, two floors of 11,000 square foot per floor. That's a good bit of space. And we're pretty far along on the project, you know? Especially with this other money that's already earmarked and I, I think it's a good move there. I mean, of course, grading and parking would be another thing, but we do have parking up in the city with the pedestrian bridge for now and, uh, you know, on site, the old plans that were done, there's space for 250 parking spaces on the property, so.
Oh, it'd be at, at least that many, I would think.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then also, part of that grant money we wanted to use to, to do secure outdoor farmer's market under the old, um, wash station, which is the skeleton of, of the building in the back. We'll put like a canvas top on it and clean it up and make that your, your outdoor farmer's market seasonal. So kind of tie things together. People come for the farmer's market, view the museum, rent the upstairs for receptions, meetings, all different things, you know? That's kind of the look on it. We have to get some conceptual drawings and some different things. And then eventually the amphitheater in the ruins over there, too. Um, so I think, I think it's a good plan over there. All come together.
Yep. When another set of ayes sees it, sees it with a different look.
Yeah.
It, uh, kind of gives you a better idea of what somebody else is thinking.
Yeah.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I had no meetings this week.
Lucky you.
Yeah.
Mr. Catlin?
Didn't have any board meetings, but yesterday I did have a school safety meeting. Um, it's a, usually a monthly or monthly and a half, uh, situation that Mr. Goguenier, I've been participating in for several years now and all good stuff, uh, trying to keep our kids safe. Uh, yesterday also, I did attend like a little, uh, town hall lunch thing with a delegate comp sponsored, and his main speaker was Senator hopeful, uh, Tom Willis. So, uh, had to listen to him, uh, question and answers. And I got a little one-on-one with, uh, Tom Willis after the session to talk about the future. Uh, I'm sure he's probably going to be our next senator from the 15th District, I would say, so. Uh, and also then, of course, yesterday afternoon, I was enjoyed very much the tour of the Roundhouse. Anytime you're with, uh, Randall Reed, it's an entertaining, fun day, so, uh, but, but in saying that, he's a very sharp, intelligent person that understands what culture and history is all about and how important it is, and, uh, we, we respect his opinion very highly. Um, and then tomorrow, uh, Mr. Goguenier leaving in the morning to attend a District Five, West Virginia DOH meeting up in Romney. It's going to be held there. Uh, it's headed off by Lee Thorne, who's the District Engineering Manager for District Five, so should be an interesting conversation there, so.
Eddie, what you have?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, had landmarks this week. Wasn't a whole lot going on there. There was a discussion about the grave site, uh, proposal for, um, I think there's a grave site in behind the, uh, working moving cabin. So they wanted to do some ground penetrating, uh, radar to see if, if there are in fact, uh, graves there. So they're working through all that. And, um, uh, Health Department Construction, uh, the, the concrete pad is poured yesterday at, uh, nine o'clock. They have one wall up and I anticipate the other two walls being up by now. Um, so that project is on schedule and everybody seems to be, uh, happy with that.
They can't complain about the weather, can they?
Oh, no, it's gorgeous. The, uh, the jail renovation, it is on schedule and the upstairs is pretty much finished. Was a whole lot there to be done, renovate the restroom, and, uh, it still needs, uh, flooring to be done, carpeting upstairs, painting's been done, ceiling tiles replaced. Um, downstairs, they're still figuring out some of the stuff on how it's, you know, different things to be laid out, but, but they're on it. And, uh, uh, Wayne's Borough Construction, uh, they, they brought us some pretty good ideas of some different ways to do things there, uh, as well. So that's, that's working real fine. And, uh, like Steve said, yesterday with the Roundhouse, uh, with Randall Reed Smith, uh, I know that you personally have done a lot of work down there. I know that HD has been involved there for a long time and Matt's been involved there. That whole board, uh, over the last, you know, 25 years or so, has put so much effort into that facility, trying to keep it maintained and, um, but, but man, what a, what a wonderful place. Once you're there on the grounds, walking through and seeing and feeling some of the history, it's just a wonderful place. I really hope that we can get traction there.
Yeah. A huge, a huge grant.
Excuse me? What's an update? I wasn't able to make that meeting.
Just for an update on construction, the report center, uh, is near completion. They've done final walkthrough. Now they're going touch up for, for that. We should have final walkthrough pending. The elevator getting done and taken care of. If you see anybody from Wayne's Borough Construction, do not say the word elevator. It's a hot topic, pretty, pretty big issue. Turns out, seems like in every new construction, elevator is the topic. It can, it's just a problem, a press point. Uh, to that point, the, the parking lot is done and striped, so your parking lot is back in business. I don't know if they've taken the security fence down yet.
Not yet.
But it will be probably today. Uh, at that, I have a question. Does the commission want to entertain a grand opening for that building before it gets occupied?
That would probably be a, a good idea if y'all want to.
Eddie, what date did we kick around?
12th?
I think we should for the investment we have there.
Yeah, let me, I forget, what was it, Penn?
The 12th.
The Thursday, the 12th? Do you want to do like a one o'clock? What's, what's the desire of the group? I don't want to schedule something and it mess up.
That's a Tuesday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the, uh, Tuesday, 12th.
That's not, that's a campus date, Penn. That's like, yeah, board of campus.
I say something come across with the 12th there.
No, December campus. We're talking about the.
December 12th.
That's Thursday.
December 12th.
December 12th. Yeah.
That'll work. That'll work forever.
What day of the week is that?
Thursday.
We'll do it like after the meeting, one o'clock. So we'll let Tim know and, uh, get everybody invited from the First Foundation to all of the players on that board and anybody you so choose, and we'll put together a.
Send it out to some of the elected.
Of course. We'll work on an invite list and make sure you approve and we'll get it out.
Sounds good.
Like I said, Penn, thank you.
Anything else, Eddie?
No, sir.
Okay. I, I had to attend my, uh, Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority meeting by Zoom and I didn't have a real good connection out of where I was at. But the takeaway, um, is the construction has started on the new, um, transit facility over there on the corner of Raleigh and Race. And as you can see, they, uh, they moved a lot of dirt and got rid of a big old building over there. So, uh, the one little hiccup in that was, um, stormwater management. Uh, in the process of doing the, um, the construction, it, they had to prepare for one so they could build the other. So there was a little bit of a, a town thing issue with the city and the construction company. But I think, uh, there was a couple of other things that couldn't really pick up on, but however, um, it was a pretty good meeting and like I said, that construction job is well underway, so. And then Eddie and I, we were on the, the radio station on Monday morning.
I forgot about that.
Yeah. We, we talked about the, the progress that the county's taken and, um, some of the, um, aspects of the, uh, stat, or the state of the county. And, uh, it was a good, it's always good to be on the radio with those guys, so. And that's all I have. We, now we have a honorary commissioner. Finally said it right this time. And Eddie will take care of that for us, so. Ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge my name.
I, Camille Frail.
I swear in firm.
I swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner. To the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To the Office of, Sir.
To the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Which have been appointed.
Which have been appointed.
Who have been appointed. Congratulations. Just kind of talk to you about yourself.
Um, so my name is Camille Frail. Um, I am a 13-year-old eighth grader at St. Joseph's School in Martinsburg. Um, I am applying to go to Barbara Ingram, the Arts High School in Maryland. Um, I'd like to, uh, pursue a career, um, in theater, or I'd like to work in child development because I love little kids and they're amazing. Um, my mother works for WVU and my father works for the IRS in cybersecurity. I love my school. Everyone's awesome there at school. I do choir. Um, I've, I sang recently, um, Friday for a naturalization ceremony. Um, I've performed at various different theaters, um, from Maryland to Virginia and, you know, Martinsburg at the Apollo. I honestly love West Virginia history. We are supposed to do the Golden Horseshoe in sometime in the near future and hopefully it should be good.
Hopefully. Well, very good. I'm sorry.
We should have personally introduced you to, to Mr. Randall Reed Smith this morning.
It was entertaining, like listening to what he said about everything and the history. I haven't been to the museum, but I've heard about it because it's one of our lessons and there's a lot on the Eastern Panhandle, especially the three counties, Jefferson, Berkeley and Morgan.
Morgan.
Yeah, Morgan, okay, I was right. Um, there's a lot more like festivities than other counties there in West Virginia, so, yeah.
How long ago was it?
The Golden Horseshoe, too.
But, uh, Randall, he came in and did a presentation with Matt. How long ago was that, Matt? About four years ago and did a rendition of West Virginia Hills? He is quite the singer. And, uh, he, he did a, uh, impromptu, and he, he's very good.
I thought he was going to sing today, but he didn't.
He probably wouldn't have taken much to coax him to do it, but, uh, you would, you would have enjoyed that, but, but yeah. So when he comes back, maybe we can get him to drop by your old school.
Absolutely. That'd be awesome.
It would be. Well, if you have any questions or comments that you want to make, just nudge Penny or HD and, or get my attention and we'll open the floor to you. How's that?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Brian Ross, Community Development Director, update on engineering and planning.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Got some statistics and some updates to share here with you. Um, we'll start with just what was on my read ahead. Um, in the engineering department, um, John Dick will be retiring at the end of November. Steve Aberegg will be accepting the Building Code Official position starting December 1st. Um, our latest hire, Dan Tracy, has just passed his commercial plan reviewer exam. And Debbie Watt, who is currently a residential inspector, just currently passed her commercial building inspector exam. Um, in the planning department, Sarah Sandry went from an administrative assistant three to a planner one position. Julie Wright is now our administrative assistant two. And Laura Hoffmaster just recently, this week, passed her CFM exam. She is now our certified floodplain manager. So congratulations to all those with their efforts that were put forth to achieve that. Um, Laura and I are currently working on a comprehensive plan update.
How far along is?
We, uh, submitted more information this week. We are just waiting for some clarification, um, from Mr. Wine and Mr. Weinbran- Mr. Weinbranner on just a little bit of some verbiage on there, and we should be good to go with that.
That will be the, the minor step to modify your current comp plan to be able to go forward with your impact. For purpose, your question to where you have the comp plan, that's a two-year project, so they're just scratching the surface.
Uh, can we get a copy of modified comprehensive plan? Did we get a copy of modified comprehensive plan?
One statement that I showed you is the only.
That's it?
Yeah, it's modified. But you will, sir. Absolutely.
All departments.
Be done by the end of this calendar year for sure. I talked to Laura in line to vote the other day and she thought sure it'd be ready to go here by the first of, part of December, maybe.
Yeah, the verbiage I sent the commission to look at, everyone has consistently agreed that will, they'll now go forward with the planning commission. So I would assume the planning commission will be able to do adoption coming soon through that process. Very good.
Everyone else in the departments have continued to do their daily tasks from plan review to inspections to anything administrative up into fee collections.
How, when an applicant presents his application, how long before he's given his permit?
That depends on the project.
Yeah.
Naturally, small stuff, garages, small additions, decks. We're turning them around in about five to seven business days. We're currently, um, residential homes are roughly to two and a half weeks with initial review comments. And commercial also depends on the size of the project. But we try to get them definitely within about three weeks, at least with initial comments and revisions or resubmissions is on the applicant. Resubmit for that. In the future, moving forward, there will be some more changes coming from moving of offices to a couple of staff changes and some future discussions. Once Mr. Wine and I, um, discuss possible pay increases for staff for testing. Some numbers, I know everybody likes numbers. So I got some numbers here for you. First, we're going to talk about the planning department. And we are talking about calendar year, not fiscal year. So this calendar year, uh, ending in September, because I don't have my final numbers for October. The planning commission has approved four hundred and fifty single family detached lots and four hundred and fifty-two single family attached lots on one thousand one hundred and sixty acres. We, in addition, there is seventeen new commercial industrial projects that have been approved on a total of a hundred and eleven acres. Staff is currently reviewing thirteen sketch plans, twenty-seven preliminary plans, nine plan changes, seventeen final plats and thirty minor plats with a total of ninety-six total projects. Sixty of those are residential and thirty-six are commercial industrial. Fees collected for this calendar year in the planning department currently to the end of September is five hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents. Engineering and permits department. Once again, this is January through September. Lot, a lot of times people like, what are, what are we doing with single families, townhouses, mobile homes, so on and so forth. So I've got some numbers here for you. Ending in September, um, single family homes detached, we've permitted five hundred and sixty. Townhouses, we've permitted four hundred and ninety. Duplexes, we've permitted thirty-six. Mobile homes, we've permitted eighty-four. Now keep in mind, when I discuss mobile homes, a lot of them are pull and replace. There's not new mobile home parks popping up. So these are pull and replace or lots out back creek and just isolated lots here and there that people are putting mobile homes on. So that totals basically one thousand one hundred and seventy dwellings. Total permits for January through September is two thousand six hundred and twenty-five permits, which incorporates one thousand one hundred and seventy of those being dwellings. So currently forty-five percent of our permits that are applied for currently now are dwellings. Fees collected on those permits to, from January to the end of September currently total one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. And so based off of us still having three months left in the calendar year, we, we will definitely surpass the three thousand permit mark again this year.
We only need seventy-five more to go.
What's that?
To pass the, uh, for permits.
But we're at two thousand six hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah. So you only, you say you're going to surpass three thousand?
Three thousand.
Yeah, you only need seventy-five more. Right?
No.
Three hundred and seventy-five. Three, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy-five more.
I didn't want to correct. I don't want to correct. I was like, can please someone help me here?
My wrong, I'm sorry. Three hundred and seventy-five. How's that?
Yes, sir. That's the number I had too.
Okay, good.
Randall Reed would have corrected me.
Yeah.
In a heartbeat. Quickly.
Thank you so much. Do you have an extra copy of that or you can?
Um, I will make sure I give it to Penny and she will disperse these numbers for you.
That'll be fine.
As the president, if I may, for purposes of Brian, everything you see, and he, he just spoke to the point that the growth is consistent and, and the workload is consistent with absolutely no staff increase. Matter of fact, he's down one staff person and change. So kudos to Brian who works many instances before I get in the building and he's absolutely here after I leave the building. So he and his entire team really work hard to be able to say to you, yeah, we're turning stuff around commercially in maybe three weeks, five to seven business days on residential. So they're doing a great job with very, very little staff. Yep.
They do. And actually, Gary, I, I think we're down more than one, maybe down more than one this year, but we had an engineer that left.
I meant funded. That is correct.
Last year.
Yeah.
Correct.
And now all that goes to Doug, even though I know that the last person didn't do a whole lot of engineering, just basically did what Doug asked him to do. Above and beyond what his normal other job was. But we also now have stormwater approvals going through Doug for that engineering part as well. So I'm personally, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about your staffing levels to make sure that number one, we don't, we don't burn our people out.
Right.
And number two, that the public gets treated, you know, in efficient manner, which I know that you strive for and your staff strives for every day. But we have to be careful of that. And also is, um, currently today, I don't have anybody other than yourself designated to take care of property maintenance. And.
Correct. We did have Mr. Four.
Yes, sir.
Who was previously, took that off of me.
Yes.
And I handled it in, in the meantime when I, as time permits.
Get that in between of, of everything else that you're doing, what, what I'm just concerned about. And I've spoke to you about this. I've spoke to you about this, about just making sure we don't burn our people down.
Correct. And Mr. Wine and I have spoken about some changes that are coming forward and added staff to where we're going to come to the commission and say, you know, this is what we need.
With some of the complaints and stuff that I've been receiving, I think with the Department of, of Property Maintenance is, is going to be a hot topic here really soon.
So do I. Um, I'm getting more and more complaints pertaining to property maintenance. Lack of upkeep on rentals and just the fact of that good neighbor policy is, is gone in a lot of places. I'm not saying for everybody, but it's instead of discussing something with the neighbor, they want someone else to take care of it.
And it's a tough topic to have to go and talk to somebody about their property when they say it's my property, I can do what I want to. Yeah, but you also, I also try to think about my neighbor too. So.
Correct. It's a tough discussion out there in the field sometimes.
I would think one person could keep busy just doing that myself.
Yes.
Well, they used to.
Yeah. I think it's a very, I think it's a very important role what you all play in our community too. That needs to be addressed these places. So.
Do you find good cooperation with other agencies?
Um, I've been working quite a bit with the health department.
That's what I'm wondering.
The, my view and theirs on whether they can enforce some of the things they can is that would be something that you may be able to chime in on more than I could. But we work with the stormwater, we work with the health department, the water reserve, all the departments. As we all know, the, the one department that I wish we had more stake in the game would be naturally DOH. But we all know where we stand with that. We've, we've gotten better with our relationship with the school board for projects and moving forward with that. But overall property maintenance, I, from my understanding, the, the county sheriff is, is helping out a little bit with that too. But most of it ends up down on our, on our tables because of the IPMC codes.
I had a stormwater complaint here recently and I was very pleased with the, uh, not only Zach Norris, but also the way Doug and them handled it, investigated it and pursued it. I appreciate that a lot. I mean, you, you, they're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All righty. Next up is Randy Lilly, Emergency Manager, Services Manager, update on emergency management.
Morning.
Morning. Morning, sir.
So I looked back in about the past three months. I brought Chief Martin Roberts with me as well. He's going to report out on the Berkeley fire, on the fire side of things. As far as the emergency management side of things, you, you spoke earlier about being on the radio. Uh, we have been going out on the radio here, I guess, past three or four months and being on the show once or twice a month promoting emergency preparedness. We did fire safety. We, Chief Roberts was on the radio with that. September, we did, uh, that was National Preparedness Month. So we went out there and did some, uh, radio interviews there. But we've established a pretty good relationship and partnership with them and it looks like we'll be over at least once a month talking about different topics. We've, we conducted two emergency preparedness classes in the public. We did one at South Berkeley Volunteer Fire Department and one at the Baker Heights Fire Department, where we actually Candy had created a PowerPoint, a very nice training PowerPoint. We took that out. And it was about an hour, hour, yeah, about an hour class that we did this, uh, preparedness and promoted, uh, preparedness within the public. Couple of weeks ago, we hosted a National Weather Service training event at the EOC where the National Weather Service came over and we did a regional training event on new tools that they're providing to us for flooding. Uh, we hosted a drone certification licensing class in September, which was grant funded through part of the, the money that we had obtained through the drone grant. I believe we had four deputies from the sheriff's office that attended. Two of our firefighters, one other in emergency management. Then we had some people from outside that, that they paid their tuition from Hampshire County and Jefferson County that had attended the class. It was a well-attended class, very good class. From what I understand, everyone that's went and took the test has passed the test. So. Chief Roberts will elaborate more on this, but we participated in the House on Wheels where three thousand two hundred and thirty-three kids went through the House on Wheels program this year. Program has grown a lot and I'll let Chief Roberts elaborate on, on that. We attended the, the Berkeley County Schools Anti-Bullying Event at the War Memorial Park. And I'm, I'm going to lead into, uh, some numbers here in a minute about some of the people that we've interacted with and, and where, where we see our promoting these things is beneficial. Uh, we, uh, attended the national night out at the park. We had a big presence at the youth fair. We attended a safety event at the Church of Latter Day Saints. They invited us over to do a safety event. And I was very surprised the attendance that they had there and the people that into that event. We interacted with a lot of people there. We arranged an active shooter training for DHHR from, through the state DCEM office in West Virginia where they came down and did some active shooter training at DHHR. They were not, they didn't want, DCEM offers a class that is where they do not bring the guns in and shoot them. It's basically a PowerPoint discussion type training. And that's kind of what they wanted. Uh, we attended an emergency preparedness. We were asked by the Heritage Girls, and I believe, I hope I'm right in saying this, at the First Baptist Church right there beside Brown's Funeral Home. I think that's what that is. So the Heritage Girls is, is sort of like the Girl Scouts, uh, but, uh, more faith-based. So they meet there, uh, monthly. So we were in, we, we actually made the contact at the national night out and we were asked to come out there and do some basic first aid training and preparedness. So we went and attended that. We were asked by, by the Daughters of American Revolution, and this was a couple of Saturdays ago. I think they met at the sheriff's office, but that's where this meeting was on Saturday morning. I went out there and spoke to them about, uh, they wanted some emergency preparedness. So we're seeing a lot more people ask for emergency preparedness, uh, and how to be prepared. And we're, and we're providing that. Uh, we did do a, we did do a safety survey at the Boys and Girls Club here recently. And we also provided some stop the bleed training at DHHR where they had a regional meeting here in Martinsburg and they brought, I don't know what the re, how big the region is, but we had about thirty-five people. And I went over there and, and provided, uh, stop the bleed training for, for that group. And where we're seeing some of these things is in Alert Berkeley. That's the, whenever I do a, a preparedness training, the first thing, my song and dance is Alert Berkeley. Really push that, really promote that. And in the past ninety days, we've seen about four hundred more signups on Alert Berkeley. So we're seeing, through that, we're seeing, you know, people wanting to be more prepared, but they are signing up for Alert Berkeley. And that's the first thing I open up with is my song and dance about that.
That's about a twenty-five thousand dollar annual commitment.
And I think our totals now are somewhere around twenty-five thousand, uh, uh, community members that are signed up into that.
Dollar a person, huh?
We did get two HSGP grants this year. We got, uh, grant for, we received forty thousand dollars for LED signs and we purchased two of the LED signs like the sheriff's office has. Ours are less the radar, blue flashing lights, but they are the, the message board signs. And they are currently setting at the South Berkeley substation advertising for, uh, early voting. And Jack just called me yesterday or the day before and a request, so we're going to move them six o'clock Monday morning to another location. He's got something else he wanted to put them out there for. So they are being used. We got fifty thousand dollars in an HSGP grant for generators, light towers. And the commission had approved that. Uh, those are due for delivery tomorrow. So we should take possession of them tomorrow. They will be delivered to Baltimore Street because we have to have you forklift unloading. So. Sometime tomorrow, uh, they're supposed to be here. We're currently working on our commodity flow study. It is finished with the exception, I'm still waiting on CSX for some data. Sometimes it's a little hard to get data from the rail companies. Uh, I did send another message out this morning. Hopefully we, we'll get that soon. As soon as we get that CSX data compiled, we'll, we'll be completely finished with our commodity flow study. Uh, our TVTP grant. We have a school and community safety summit. We've starting to advertise that. You may have seen some of the brochures or flyers on Facebook or what have you about that. It is December the ninth and tenth and it's going to be located at the Centerpoint Bible Church off of TJ Jackson Drive. It's going to be an event, uh, for school safety and community safety as it relates to targeted violence and, and threats. Got some pretty good speakers that are coming to this event. Uh, it looks like it's going to be well-attended. Uh, we've, we've got people reaching out from southern part of the state that are coming to stay and, and attend the event. Hopefully this will be a good event. November the 12th, at, at the Baker Heights Fire Department, we partnered with the FBI and providing an online safety. I'm going to call it a train, online safety training. It's a couple hour training where, uh, the community is invited. We've got a lot of interest in this as well. But they provide training, online training, and it's geared towards kids. Mostly your high school, middle school kids that are on social media, protecting them from some of these threats. And it's, it's basically communicating what's out there, how these people are soliciting, uh, the kids to, uh, to be involved in some of these things and how to prevent these things. And there's actually two sessions. There is a session for the kids and there is a session for the parents. So there is also training for the parents to, to know what to look for, what your kids may be getting into, how to identify these things. So two different sessions. So that's coming up, uh, on November the 12th. And we partnered with, with the Baker Heights Fire Department to provide the venue for that. Attended a meeting yesterday, a regional meeting in Romney. The, the state grants people were there. There's some new things coming out. They're tightening up some of the requirements and some of the reporting on some of the grants. That'll be coming out, but Elizabeth will be more, uh, involved in a lot. be coming out, but Elizabeth will be more involved in most of this, but there's some more training requirements that they're requiring for our office, for those that are EMPG grant-funded the salaries, there's some more things that we have to do, some more hoops that we have to jump through, but nothing that we can't do, so. As Brian spoke earlier about the growth, we're seeing a lot more FOIA requests coming in. So, that's keeping us a little busy, because we have to dig into a lot of records and things to accurately answer these FOIA requests, so. Lastly, unfortunately, Candy left our office, we're gonna miss her, she did a lot for our office, but we're gonna keep moving on, and we're staying busy.
Alright, sounds like you got a good load on your plate most of the time, so.
We, we stay busy and take care of things. Chief, you wanna elaborate?
Morning, Chief.
Let me ask you a question, Randy. You're sort of on the School Safety Committee with Eddie and I, and what's your perspective of how the progress is going there? I, I, I'm not the expert here, so, but I'm pleased from my perspective as a citizen, but what's your perspective on how that's going?
I think it's going, it's headed in the right direction. I think they're making strides, and they're, and they're getting there, now that they've put this team together of several people, and that are dedicated towards this goal of school safety. I, I think it's getting better, it is a, a long, you know, a long ways to go, there's a lot of work there that needs to be done, I think, and I'm not saying, bashing anyone, but I think, you know, in the past, we always thought it wouldn't happen to us. But now, we've got that mindset where it could happen, you know, there are, there are a lot of kids in our school system, we have more kids in our school system than Gordon County has total population, just in our public school system, let's not count the private schools and home schools. So, it could happen, so I think that there's that acknowledgement. They've been involved with the LEPC quite a bit, with the, with the school safety.
Passion with all the agencies is the key role.
Yes, mhm. So, I, I think that they've made, there's a lot of progress there that's made, there's still a lot of progress that's to be made. Unfortunately, I had a meeting in Romney yesterday, I know there was a meeting yesterday, but I missed that one.
Yeah, there was quite a few people, they usually have it on a Tuesday, but it ended up on a Wednesday this time, so it missed a lot of people's schedules. I just, I just hope we're prepared if it does happen here at some point, you know, obviously. And I think the overall need is the school resource officers is number one, getting more of those in the schools.
Absolutely.
Is the main thing, but.
And, and the work they've done on the reunification plan, that's.
But it seems like we have all the right people there, you know, state police, county sheriff, city police, I mean, everybody.
Prosecuting attorney's office.
Services, prosecuting attorneys, nine-one-one, it's just, I'm just glad that we're doing what we're doing, and hopefully we'll get to a point where, if it does happen, we'll be prepared.
You always hear it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
You hear that, I don't like to say.
I know, you hear that.
I don't like to think that.
I appreciate the fact that our county agencies have really participated in that heavily, and are working hard to make it work with the school boards, so I appreciate y'all's efforts.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, sir.
Well, I will try to be short-winded.
Morning.
I will, good morning, gentlemen. I will try to be a little more short-winded than Randall there was, so, just a little twenty-twenty-four-year review from Berkeley County Fire Department. Of course, you guys, thank you all for backing monetarily for the Safer Grant that we aggressively, I feel, Randy, you know, Elizabeth, we, we put a lot of hard work into that grant, made sure that we had the numbers right, we, you know, sent that out to get it verified that we were in the ballgame, and we, we were in the ballgame. And I just was sitting back there talking to Chad, and I'm like, you know, it's kind of funny, you know, we can get all kinds of grants for light towers, generators, and so forth, it seems like it's easy to get, but when we start talking about getting a grant for personnel to save lives and property, it's, 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 it's a lot more aggressive than it is in trying to get equipment, and it just, it's mind-blowing to me, but it is what it is, and we'll continue to keep going where we're going, and keep doing what we're doing to make it better, and strive to make it better for the citizens of this county. So, basically, earliest year, we had a promotional exam, the place put on a promotional exam, firefighter Jeremy Taylor come out, top scorer, was promoted back in June to lieutenant, and of course, we all know what happened middle of July with Lieutenant Taylor, and he's still fighting, matter of fact, he just got home early, early yesterday morning from out in Arizona, he went out to the Mayo Clinic in Arizona, Phoenix, Arizona, and there's a renowned doctor out there that specializes in this cancer that he has, and it seems like maybe, that I have not personally got to talk to Jeremy, and I'm sorry, I get a little upset over this, but, I'm very passionate about my people, and he, it appears that he's got a mutant marker, mutation marker, that they're gonna be able to target, and so, we're gonna see here, within the next month or so, what's gonna happen. They were very pleased, and this is, I don't know whether you followed that on the Taylor Strong, but the Phoenix Fire Department came and got Jeremy on Engine Thirty from out there, and he got to ride with them, rode a couple calls with them. Captain out there, I believe, from the Professional Firefighters of Berkeley County, made a contact in Phoenix with the Professional Firefighters of Phoenix Union, and made this happen, and they came and picked Jeremy up, and man, it's just, if you, if you follow this stuff, it is, it's huge, you know, I mean, here we are in Berkeley County, West Virginia, and we got a guy going to Phoenix, Arizona, and the Phoenix, Arizona Fire Department comes and gets one of our people, one of our personnel, and treats him like their own, so, remarkable. So, we also, we had firefighter Tommy Newcombe retire with fourteen years of service, first of August. We had a rehire of Philip Barr to replace firefighter Newcombe, to place him at Station Forty. We had four firefighters go through the EMTB course, four firefighters completed their auto extrication technician course, and then, of course, Randy talking, we talked about the House on Wheels Fire Education Program presented to three thousand two hundred and thirty-three elementary students. Big thanks to the Martinsburg Fire Department's, Fire Department for their assistance every day in staffing, and a fire engine, and pulling the house on wheels. I, I want to make it clear right here on record, that if it was not for the Martinsburg Fire Department, this program would fall flat on its face. And there, we really need to look at our stance from Berkeley County and the Berkeley County Fire Department, of our commitment to that program next year. Budget-wise, overtime for guys to be able to go do that, the city of Martinsburg's eating, eating that big time, and, you know, they're coming to the county schools as well, we're going to the city schools, and it's, you know, we need, we need to do something to maybe better our
Presence.
Presence in that program, because it is a great program. And so, the one sixty-seventh, they assisted also this year with an engine at some schools, and so, I greatly appreciate everybody, but like I said, I want to make it clear and put on record that if it wasn't for the city of Martinsburg Fire Department, this program would fall flat on its face. We held testing on ten twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, for an open firefighter position created with the float position to help with overtime issues. Six part-timers took the test, which you all approved this morning, thank you, Cole Kernan and Bradley for their change in status, and Cole Kernan was the, ended up being at the top of the scoring and so forth, so. Let me just tell you a little something about what I feel is pretty amazing about Berkeley County, Berkeley County Fire Department. This gentleman worked in Stafford County as a career firefighter. He was leaving Stafford County to come to Berkeley County. He's a resident of Berkeley County, but he wants to work, he wants to work in his home county, he wants to work for Berkeley County Fire Department. I think that's pretty amazing, and I think once we find a funding mechanism, that we start opening up to where we can start hiring and bringing other departments on twenty-four, you're gonna see some great people that probably live here, live close to here, that work elsewhere, that's probably gonna make the transition to Berkeley County Fire Department. And so, I think, I think it's pretty, pretty awesome that, you know, these things are happening, you know what I'm saying? And I'm not saying it's because of me, I'm saying it's because of all of us. Takes a, takes a village to make a place great, you know, so. Call totals, so Randall hit on Candace leaving, I've been working with Chris this past week. I'm going to start being able to do some graphs and tracking of call volumes, scratches, fails, what the calls are after six P, six PM to six AM in the stations. I, I'm seeing them, but I want to make sure that what I'm seeing is legitimate, and there ain't, there ain't, I want to make sure that the numbers are what the numbers are. And so, for, so far, what we have, which I think the number is higher, is since January first to October twenty-second, there's been two thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dispatch calls for the Fire Department, for services from the Fire Department this year. I actually believe that that number's low. I believe that that number is a lot higher, and once we can start figuring out what, how IT, or whatever, how it's coming, because when I add numbers to departments together, I'm coming up double that number, so, that's why I'm saying, I think that that number is a lot greater than two thousand some dispatches for this year so far. But, that's pretty much all I have.
I'm confused, you know, I mean, don't most of the dispatches go through nine-one-one?
Yeah, so, what I, what I've been told, when I looked at individual department numbers, and I took those five departments and added those numbers together, it was well over two thousand eight hundred, but what I was told is, it's because on a structured fire, you get four departments, so four departments are getting marked for a call, so, versus one dispatch is only one, you follow me, is one, one call. But, I still think that there's, there's, like I said, it was well over two thousand more calls, and I'm like, I don't, I don't know that I buy all that, and I'm not saying that I think so, I just think that we need to figure out what, compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges, and, you know, same was on the fail scratch rate, you know, I got, I got a, I got a report this morning that I went over, and I had discrepancy with, that my, my twenty-four-hour fire station has more, more fails than these other fire stations that only have twelve-hour coverage. So, something, you follow what I'm saying, something's, something needs to be fine-tuned somewhere, so I need to figure out where it needs to be fine-tuned, because this is all new, this just started this week with me, with the new administrative assistant and so forth, and things that she could offer to me, so this is the first thing that I'm trying to get figured out, and make sure that I get it tuned well, before I come up here and start spitting statistics and so forth at you guys, and they'd be off, I don't want to do that.
So, you're saying, you're saying that you had more, like, calls that didn't make it too, from the paid fire department than the twelve-hour?
Yeah, yeah, so it was showing, so it was showing like Station Sixty had more fails, which meant they did not respond, than the volunteer departments with only twelve-hour coverage, Monday through Friday. Baker Heights is covered seven days a week now, there are gonna be some calls that they're already tied up on, but not the number that came, came out on that data, was, that, there's no way, so. So, it just needs to be fine, you know what I'm saying, I need to understand what they're, what that, what, what the parameters are that they're pulling that data from, is, you know, what I specifically need, so, like I said, it may need to be refined a little bit, and we're gonna work on that to get it, so.
Back to the grant thing, has it been determined we're not gonna get them already for this time around again?
That's correct.
Yeah, I was gonna speak on that too, Steve. On, on the personnel grants, I kind of understand, because when you get into business, and you give grant for a position, that's ongoing money forever, you give money for a piece of equipment, that's one time, the next time they can give it to somebody else, and that's why it's harder probably to get those personnel grants, because they know they're locked in time and time again.
Yeah, well, they're locked in for a three-year period is how, how that works with the Safer Grant for career firefighters.
Who makes that decision, federal's decision, as federal, obviously, but.
One of the other things is, we're not the only jurisdiction. Everyone in the country.
Sure, sure. Who handles it, who handles it at the federal level is my question, who does?
What agency are you applying to?
FEMA.
It's all through FEMA?
Yeah, DH, yeah, Department of Homeland Security.
Chief, your hazmat and your water rescue, you didn't mention, but you're all good?
Yes, sir, we are doing okay. Um, let's see, we possibly, maybe Jefferson County, Bakerton, got a, I think it was eight smaller boats from Fairfax County that Deb, trying to remember where he's.
DeMar?
Huh?
Bob?
I can't remember now, but anyway, he, he specifically made these boats for Jefferson County, and it's a little smaller boat that would really suffice us, like on the Back Creek, packing, when the water's down, you know, on the river, that, you know, we could, only thing we're gonna be looking at, if we possibly get one, which I will bring up to, once I know that it's gonna happen, that we'd need to get a trailer and a, and a motor.
That's something that, similar to what Baker Heights already has?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, but it's a still, it's a closing, it's a closed-nosed, and it's got the, it's basically like ours, except it's a smaller version of the Chesapeake, scaled down. It's actually, I believe that it's actually a little smaller than the one that Baker Heights has. Yes, sir.
And that's, you, you were able to pick up Cole Kernan, and that, he's a, he's a fine young man, yeah, that was, that was a great pickup.
You know, we have, we have a couple other, you know, guys that are on that list, you know, that if, you know, depending on what steps we move forward, further with trying to, you know, curtail the overtime, and, but, one thing I wanted to tell you all is, is I don't, Jefferson County Emergency Services down there just got their certification last, last month, it was last month or the month before, as a county career fire department, and so basically, Berkeley County, you know, is leading, you know, we were the first, and now Jefferson County comes second, and it's, there's, there's counties that are constantly trying to call and contact us about, hey, what'd you do, you know, and so forth, and we're telling them, so, listen, I told you all I wasn't gonna be long-winded, and so, are there any other questions?
I have one more comment.
Yes, sir.
I sat yesterday and talked to one of your firefighters, our firefighters, yesterday for twenty minutes or so, fine young man, firefighter Graham, and he was, wanted to thank the commission for the testing that was done on these individuals that we paid for, and to me, it's something, in my mind, it should be budgeted and done every year for these folks that are serving us, so.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that, I, I appreciate that, and it was, I, I got to go through that this year, and, you know, nobody wants to find out that they have something wrong with them, you know what I'm saying, and so that, I guess, kind of like in the back, you know, listen, we keep on moving until we got something to worry about, you know what I'm saying? So here we are now, we're getting, we're getting these diagnostic tests, and it's like, you know, you know, something's coming up, you know, every, every single one of us that got tested, there was something, you know what I'm saying? It may not have been significant, but there was something, you know what I'm saying? And if you don't know that there's something, you're, sometimes you're better off, you know? But listen, I appreciate, the only thing.
Also, early detection, though, in particular with the C-word, is a very important thing, and to me, it's worth our funding to do that for our firefighters. I really believe that.
Yes, sir, and, and I, I would hope that next year, that maybe next year, we can do the whole, the whole department every year instead of having to do half the department one year, half the department the next year, because I'm a firm believer in now what I know that I didn't know, that, yeah, you know, I mean, we'll go back to Jeremy. You know, Jeremy started having some illness in March, went to a top specialist in Baltimore, your University of Maryland, liver specialist. I don't know why you're here. You got a fatty liver, you got NASH, which is non-alcoholics' eroses of the liver, go on a Mediterranean diet. A man goes on a diet, loses all this weight, and I'm like, that, this, there's something, there's something still wrong, you know? And all of a sudden, come July, I mean, it was, it was evident, you know, it was on. And so, early detection, of course, again, it's only good as it's going to be, you know, as well, and, you know, because, you know, reflect back to Jeremy, so, but, you know, listen, from bottom of my heart, thank you guys for everything you all do for us, okay? I know, I know there's some people that sometimes can be very critical of the Berkeley County Commission. I'm not one of them guys, okay? And I know it takes, like I said, it takes a village for all of us to make this thing work, and I know that sometimes the finances aren't there, and we have to wait, and I'm a very patient guy, okay? So, listen, thank you all for everything you do, not just for this department, but for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anything under the executive session, correct? We still got to get a picture with the honorary councilperson, so as soon as, want to do that after we adjourn, or you want to take a break?
You want to do it in front of the public?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. After we adjourn, then, for that picture? Next up is items from the public. Anybody like to come up and speak?
We've, we've missed you.
We've missed you.
We've missed you.
Al, come on in. Glad to see you.
How are you?
Good, good.
Good to see everybody. And I just want to thank everybody for, I agree with the chief, I thank everybody for what they do, what you have done, you know, for Berkeley County people. Thank you. That's pretty much all I wanted.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, and it's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, Al.
All righty. Any further business? Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I think it's time to adjourn.
We are recessed.
We're recessed.
We are recessed.